The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'll call the council to order. Let the role reflect that all council members are in attendance and a quorum has been established. Tonight, we have a presentation from Tennis Sanitation in relation to the Green Team Program. And Willie, I'll recognize you. Welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Melanie, I have your check I didn't give to you yet, but that's here. Yes, this quarter was Cub Boy Scout Troop 534. And we have a check for them if someone would like to come up. This, I think, most people know, we have a container down at Terry's Hardware. And every quarter, we do a different youth organization. And it's very nice that Terry's lets us do that. And it's very good for the youth groups. And when we don't get any complaints about being a mess around there, we feel that the group is doing a good job. And so this quarter, we had no complaints, so you guys did a very good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Boys, would you like to address how you did this quarter? Why don't you come on up and tell us what you worked on? And what you're going to use the money for?
All right. So some of this money, we're going to use for camping. Because every winter, summer, fall, and spring, we have campouts. So we like might rent a place to stay. We might do troop activities with this money. About it.
Okay, that sounds great. What did you guys do to promote your event?
You know what? I honestly don't know.
Well, it was pretty successful, so I'll keep doing what you're doing. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Tennis. Council, you have before us the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting on October 2nd, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. We have council items to be considered. Any council items to be considered? Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda. Consent agenda, Melanie?
Your Honor and Council, I've got two addition, well, two items for your consideration tonight. Number one is, staff is requesting that item number 12, the collateral agreement for the solar array installation be removed. And we will bring it back at a more appropriate time, so we'd ask that be removed. And then we also would ask that you approve or add to the consent agenda an auxiliary board request from Regina. They do an annual fall bizarre event, and there's some parking restrictions that they've asked for, and we've typically supported. So we've handed out the staff memo for you, and we emailed it out earlier today. So we would ask that item number 12 be removed, and we have a new number 18 with the Regina event.
Anyone want to move that amendment to the consent agenda? Councilmember Balsanick makes that motion, seconded by Councilmember Brock's to the amendment. Is there any discussion to the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion prevails. We have the consent agenda before us as amended. I'll accept the motion. Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Lund. We have that motion before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion prevails. Next, we have under awarding of contracts in public hearing. Award a contract for the water meter replacement program. Nick, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thanks, Mayor Hicks. Thank you. Good evening, city council members. We had a bid submitted about three weeks ago now for our water meter replacement program that'll go throughout the city over the next six-plus years. Initially, for 2017, we'll have about 300 meters in the group that's being replaced before the end of this calendar year. But then thereafter, we'd replace around 1,000 meters each year through 2023. The pricing that we got locks in for all of those years. It was kind of a unique contract and bid that we've not done before, where it's a multi-year program. But we're pleased with the numbers that we did get, well within the projections that we had for costs and compatible with our forecasted budgets. So staff's recommending we award the contract to Corin Maine for doing this work. One thing I'll note on the resolution that's attached, one minor typographical error on the actions being taken by the council as a result of the resolution. I had Daner Inc. in there for the contractor rather than Corin Maine. So we'll get a clean copy submitted to the mayor for signature, assuming it's approved tonight. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Hicks.
Okay, thank you, Nick, for that presentation. Council, those items before us, what's your wish? Councilmember Brock's?
I have a question just about the bid process. Since we only got one bid, is there, is that normal? Is that typical? Or is that something different than what we would expect?
It's, it was, it's tough to say with this sort of situation. We haven't done water meter replacement projects under a bidding scenario in the past. They've been, the last round of meter replacements we did about 20 years ago were done entirely by city staff. And it took many years to get through that, not an efficient process by any means. This way, it kind of consolidates things and utilizes contractors to move through that more efficiently. So the way we had it set up was to allow for all of the system components to be compatible with what we've already done leading up to this point. And so that can tend to kind of pigeonhole things a little bit. But in the end, we are getting a product and a system that fits with everything that we have in place so far, so.
Any further discussion? Now I'll seek a motion. Councilmember Brock's makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Balsanick. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a public hearing regarding a vacation of an easement for O'Brien at 713 Ninth Street West and 720 Tenth Street West. John, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members, we have before you is a public hearing tonight to consider the vacation of an easement, as noted on the map. This is an area that used to be Oak Street between Ninth Street and Tenth Street. We vacated the right-of-way in 2003. We reserved an easement in blue here over the eastern half of the right-of-way. Within that right-of-way, there was a gas main that was within there that we knew about. We wanted to be able to reserve the easement over there. Since that time, the ownership of the property has changed. The applicant is requesting to vacate this easement in relation to discussions he's had with Great River Energy to, or Center Point Energy, excuse me, to remove the gas line that's within the easement. We were working towards that. Everything was going fine with it. We scheduled the public hearing to take place so that we could take action on the vacation of easement request. However, after the resolution or after the public hearing notice was formalized and sent out, we did realize there is some Excel Energy concerns within the easement itself. And so what we're asking for tonight is to hold the public hearing, since we've already notified people of that tonight, in case there's any concerns with the vacation of easement. And then at a later date, we would come back with action on the vacation of easement. What we're asking, and we've had discussions with Mr. O'Brien, is that we, when he gets a resolution on the Excel Energy concerns on that one, and then we can take place and move forward on the vacation of the easement. So at this point, we're asking you to open the public hearing with no action on the item tonight, and I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to the easement being proposed between Ninth and Tenth Street, along basically where Oak Street was going to be someday? So anyone like to speak to that issue? Anyone here on easement? Okay? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. Council, this issue is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn?
Quick question for John. Do we have any idea how far out we are with talking to Excel on that easement?
Yeah, conversations, Councilmember, have taken place. We're hopeful that this could come back at the next meeting on November 6th.
With that, I make a motion to approve it, then, as long as it's moving along.
Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve?
No action.
Excuse me. This was just for a public hearing tonight. We might get that opportunity at the next meeting. Thank you, Councilmember. Okay? So is there any further discussions or comments at this time? Okay, thank you. The next item is under community development. We have a final plat and site plan for Glendale Heights. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members, the actions before you, as the mayor pointed out, are a final plat for Glendale Heights Fifth Edition. This is a one-lot subdivision, a replating of the outlot that was created during the original phases of Glendale Heights around 2003. And then a site plan approval for Voyager Estate, which is a three-story, 89-unit apartment building, which would be constructed on the site. Both those actions can be approved by a simple majority of city council. The property that we're looking at is located here. It's about 4.75 acres, located within the Glendale Heights subdivision. Spiral Boulevard comes in from Highway 316 here. Voyager Parkway is located in this direction. You can see just to the south of the red area is the existing Eagle Point Department Building. This is a 60-unit, three-story building that was constructed about 10 years ago. The rest of the subdivision here is a combination of some single-family detached and townhome development. Most of this done between about 2003 and about 2007, within that area. And so we did have the planning commission take a look at this, as well as the Park and Recreation Commission. The planning commission reviewed this on October 9th. They voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the action. No one spoke for or against the item at the meeting. Commissioners did have some discussion relating to traffic, road connections, stormwater, and some of the first-floor garages. And I'll get into that detail here in a little moment. The Park and Recreation Commission also reviewed this pertaining to park dedication. They did opt to recommend cash be paid in lieu of land, the amount of about $97,000 for park dedication in this area. They did have a pretty significant discussion about park needs within the greater neighborhood here. They did direct staff to look at options in the future for physical land dedications in the vicinity to better serve this area. So taking a look at the actions that we have before us tonight, a little bit of a history lesson here. Glendale Heights, the subdivision itself and the plans were developed in 2003. What showed here is a concept or a preliminary plat of the entire development. What I'm noting here is that on the property that's before us tonight was originally scheduled for two 80-unit apartment buildings. What's coming forward tonight is one 89-unit building. So there's a significant decrease in the number of apartment units that was originally planned for this site. Looking at what remains in Glendale Heights, the only other property that really remains of significance would be a 40-unit property down here, which would be another apartment building towards Spiral Boulevard and 31st Street. This existing apartment building is there already, and most of the rest of the subdivision has been constructed. So the plat itself is pretty straightforward. One-lot subdivision necessary in order for construction to take place in the property. We did mention the payment of park dedication fees and payment of sewer interceptor fees that would be paid within the subdivision itself. On the apartment building itself, this is a site plan layout of what the apartment building would look like. This is Voyager Parkway. It'd be an L-shaped building, three stories in height. There'd be a couple of detached garage buildings located here, some surface parking, garage parking here, and also some garage door parking along the part of the first floor of the building in these locations here. So you'd have first-floor residential and then first-floor garage space located in these sections. So the plan as proposed here does meet our minimum parking requirements of two spaces per unit. This kind of gives a layout here of what the development would look like. From a grading standpoint, we have some stormwater pounding requirements that would be satisfied to the south of the building. Existing berm over here is, was planted to provide better separation between this area and future industrial park phases to the west here. Also included in here is a small tot lot area for the use of the apartment dwellers themselves. They have, I think, some swings, some picnic tables, and some other private amenities within that area. Shows some of the landscaping around the development here. Landscaping meets our minimum requirements as well for planting, planting based upon the size of the building and the size of the property. And this is what the building would look like here. It meets architectural standards, be a combination of stone along the lower foundations, interspersed with windows and kind of a fiber cement hardy board-type exterior along other portions of the development itself. So in some ways, it's pretty similar to the building that's there already. So when the planning commission did review this, they did take a look at some of the traffic in the area. As you may know, from Glendale Heights, there is one main entrance in and out of the subdivision here, which is Voyager Parkway. We remember looking at that early on with this development, 2003. We established this area here as a future right-of-way and an emergency access trail to provide emergency secondary access to the property, and also to looking at that in the future, that a roadway extension could be brought forward here as well. When we took a look at the, at the, some of the traffic issues and traffic generation that we had on the subdivision here, we've got, this is another possibility to help relieve things in the future. And then we were, we did some additional widening out of the entrance area here towards the beginning of the plant to help alleviate some of those emergency access concerns that would come through there. So again, before you tonight is the final plat and the site plan, and I can stand for any questions that you may have on that.
Okay, thank you, John. Council, let's deal with the final plat first. So we have the final plat. We'll have to take each one separately. Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. John, so we went from two 80-unit apartment buildings down to one 89. We lost basically an apartment building. Is that based on projected demand or some sort of land constraint? Or what, you know, what kind of created that change? And then the way it looks, it looks like the original design, you could fit two apartments. And now we put one apartment, and I don't know how you, you know, fit a Volvo in there or something. So, so I guess what I'm saying is we are limiting the potential to add another apartment in the future.
Councilmember, that's correct. With the development here, it would, I think it contemplated underground parking within both of these buildings here, limited surface parking within both of them. When you take out that underground parking, you add it to the surface, that takes up more land space. And then we have some additional stormwater requirements that have changed since 2003, necessitating further stormwater drainage property in this location.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brock?
Thank you. John, I just have a question about the park dedication fees that are going to be paid. So how is that money, what happens with that money? Does it go back into the general fund for use for anything? Or what? Because this is one of my favorite neighborhoods in Hastings. I get lots of calls from this neighborhood. And there's a ton of kids. And there isn't any playground or play structure that's relatively close, other than Vets Park. So I would echo the planning commission sentiments that we do need to look at, at that in the future. I'm not necessarily concerned about it right now, but there are a lot of kids in that neighborhood, and it's fairly isolated. So I think we should include in our planning an opportunity to look at having a playground or a play space or adding to Vets Park or whatever it is. I don't know what the solution is. I just want to make sure we don't lose track of that, that point, because I think it's important for this neighborhood.
Sure. With the park dedication that would be paid here, it goes into a specific ward account for park purposes. So in the four wards of the city, any development that occurs within that ward, park dedication stays for use for park facilities within that. Now, I don't believe that can be used for maintenance. It's really designed for acquisition and expansion of park facilities.
Sorry. So we basically keep that money in reserve for future expansion purposes, so it is, it's tracked.
Right, right. It's allocated specifically for park uses and even further allocated, I believe, that it can't go for maintenance. I think it's really designed really for acquisition and expansion within the specific ward.
Thank you very much for that explanation.
Councilmember Liefel?
Thank you, Mayor. John, kind of to expand a bit on Councilmember Rock's question there, where exactly would we put a park out there?
You know, Councilmember, that's a, it's a good question there. We were looking at that at Park Board when we were reviewing this a couple of weeks ago. Within Glendale Heights here, there's not a lot of opportunities on vacant space. You have some significant grade that goes down here, as you can see from some of the forested areas. You know, where this apartment building is over here planned, there might be some room on the top of that before it slopes down. That might be a possibility. There might be a possibility in other areas immediately adjacent to this. So those were some of the ideas that were kicked around.
Okay, yeah, I guess I just, to go back to Councilmember Lund's question regarding losing, you know, 71 units, in essence. But they're taking up the entire space that was originally intended. But I guess my concern would be this area does need a park. I as well have many friends out there and lots and lots of children. I see them on their bikes constantly, and I would really echo that concern as to this seems to be something that we have to look at. And adding in more housing obviously makes more children, so we should probably address this. Thank you, John.
Sure. Further discussion, Council? Councilmember Foltch?
Thank you, Your Honor. John, is this site plan completely locked down? And I wonder, is it possible for them to increase the size of that tot space? And, because you know, tots usually mean little, little ones, and, and then, you know, that leaves children probably over the age of, you know, six to 12, maybe, that would want to use a park. I just think maybe that would be an option, you know, if the kids at least had a place within the apartment complex to be able to go, rather than having absolutely nothing. I have had a resident contact me just recently about the walking path. If you go back to the, the slide. So is that north then? So the area that, that's a path right now?
Right here.
But, yeah, but that area there, now, we just rezoned that, so that's for commercial development. So, but going to the right then? So that path continues on, correct? And it goes down towards Vets Park? I've never walked it myself.
Yeah, the, the path itself, Councilmember, would go from Voyager Parkway here, going down towards, this is the water tower, and Vets Park is, the ball fields would start right about here. Now, I'm unclear, it doesn't appear from the aerial that there's actually a trail once it hits this roadway here. But the fields themselves would be right about here.
But going the other way, does the path go out?
Oh, going the other way? It would go to Voyager Parkway, and then there's a pathway along Voyager Parkway on the east side of it that links down to Spiral Boulevard, which also has some, some trails on it as well.
But that, what's a dirt path right now? So going to the east?
Going to the east.
That's a dirt path right now, correct?
No, it's paved.
It is paved, okay. Because I've had a resident call and tell me that there's a lot of people in that area as well who have dogs that have been, that are walking unleashed in the area, and that she's been attacked on a few occasions. And so I think that also increases the need. I mean, if, if kids can't safely bike those trails and they can't go very far because of the industrial complex, I just, I agree that there should be more to be done. And if they could possibly put something more on site to accommodate those children, since it doesn't seem feasible to do anything in the immediate future.
Sure. Councilmember, I can go back to the site plan here. This is the area of the tot lot as they're being proposed. Now, taking a look at the distance that they have between the building and the property line over here, I'm estimating that's probably going to be about 50, 60 feet, maybe 70 feet there. So the width they have gets to be pretty tight within there to put something terribly extensive in there. Suppose anything's possible, but it gets to be pretty tight.
Well, I'll leave it in your hands, but whatever you can do to help encourage them to expand the playground area to be more accommodating.
Hey, Council, on the final plat, do we have a motion on the final plat?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Brock makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Foltch. Any discussion further on the final plat? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. To the site plan. I think John explained that pretty well, the site plan. So is there any additional questions? Councilmember Vaughn? Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Foltch. That motion is before the body. Any discussion, further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you, John. Next on the agenda, we have an update on the Breakaway Arts Cafe, Sidewalk Cafe. I know at the last meeting, we talked about it, and we've had a couple of emails on it. And Melanie, can you give us the latest update? And I see that Mecca's here, too.
Your Honor and Council, at the last meeting, you had asked for an update on the process of Breakaway Arts Cafe wanting to put in a sidewalk cafe. So within your package, there is a timeline which begins in April or so of 2016. And really, I think the pieces to remember on this is the way the property is configured, the property immediately outside the cafe is actually Mindot right-of-way. And so we've been working with Mindot on what is the process by which the owner could put a sidewalk cafe outside, because our code requires that those permissions be granted by Mindot. And so originally, we were told there was one process called a conveyance. And that's a fairly lengthy process, which requires some financial investment. And that was communicated to Mecca. And then there was an additional question about, is that, is that really the necessary process? So we, we reached out to Mindot again, and then were told that, well, it could be a turn-back process, which would entitle and entail really turning back the street, the sidewalk, everything back to the city for future responsibility. And that process would allow a sidewalk cafe to be lawfully opened. At the recent Commissioner on Wheels tour, there were some questions of the Commissioner of Transportation who was there on, and really, what is the proper process? Because we've been advocating, from the city staff's perspective, advocating for a non-bureaucratic of a process as possible. We understand the desire for the sidewalk cafe and are looking to help the property owner with resolution. At this point, as you look at kind of that last page of the memo, you'll see, you know, that the September timeline and October timeline. So the Mindot Commissioner is aware of the situation, the concerns. And there have been a number of meetings, as I understand it. As of last week, there was one meeting to talk about some permanent and short-term solutions, agreeable to all parties. But as of today, we don't have any firm conclusion from Mindot on which process they would require to allow for placement of a sidewalk cafe. So that's a brief outline of the process to date. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mecca, did you have anything more to add to the process?
Just that we plan to meet again on Wednesday.
Okay. Okay. Okay, great. So you have a meeting on Wednesday, hope to get a short-term solution in place as we're working on the long-term solution. Okay? That's about the best update we can get. Wednesday. Okay. Sounds great. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Balsanick?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, just to make a, a couple of comments about this whole issue, because I've worked with, with Mecca Page over the last year, you know, trying to see if we can get something moving forward. And it's, it's as though Mindot is anti, anti-patio cafes. It's just, it just boggles my mind that the bureaucrats up there are impeding commerce. You know, as I read through commerce. You know, as I read through this timeline, and the suggestions coming back and forth from MinDOT, oh, okay, Mecca Page wants to put a, you know, an outdoor cafe in front of her building. Oh, here's an idea. Let's give all of that ramp from the bridge abutment all the way over to Mecca's building back to the city. That makes absolutely no sense at all. I'm absolutely astounded that somebody from MinDOT would come back and make a suggestion like that, as though that's a good solution to the problem. And it's, it just, again, boggles my mind that we've got to get the commissioner, the MinDOT commissioner, involved in this by coming down here, which he did for the Commissioners on Wheels tour. You know, that we have to get him down here so that we make him aware of what the hell is going on. It, it just, I, I'm just absolutely astounded that this bureaucracy is impeding commerce when you have a business that wants to make money, pay its taxes, and, and, you know, promote the well-being of our community in terms of tourism, and on and on and on and on, and all the great things that the Breakaway Arts Cafe has done so far, that we've got bureaucrats up at the state capitol, you know, giving us, what is it, two and a half pages of bull. I'm sorry, but it's just bull. For God's sakes alive.
So I have to say that if the issues of guilt and events cannot happen, we would be up in the close to activists and activists. So, so I feel incredibly grateful and fortunate that we were involved in that and had that opportunity to voice out the concerns and issues that could come up, small businesses in this state, or brokers sometimes just open these. But I'm just one person that probably, probably knows how many thousands in the state are dealing with these kinds of issues. And I really don't know what the answer is other than to, to what maybe Mark has suggested, to work with that, you know, and follow. I mean, having more of those kinds of conversations on, in an odd, normal environment, there are people that are trying to make difference, who have voiced their concerns and some of their challenges, that can maybe help to make a difference. Otherwise, which is this, sort of, this, you know, spiral of these conversations going on and on and on and on. So, you know, yeah, some of these, you know, I still agree with that.
Well, all that being said, we've got a MinDOT Office of Land Management. And if this is the way they manage their land, then somebody needs to readdress the policy that they are operating under. It, it just, we're impeding commerce here. And, and it's just taken way, way, way too long to get this whole situation taken care of. And I, I, I just can't imagine that this is the way that we do things, not us, but MinDOT. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the next item of order of business. We have before us the comments from the audience. Are there any comments from the audience? Comments from the audience? Seeing none? Counsel announcements? Announcements? Councilmember Foltch?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to take one back step about the issue about the Breakaway Arts. And just one last comment just to make is that if, if staff could look at, I don't, I haven't read what the Sidewalk Cafe ordinance says specifically about permissions, but if we could just, if Mecca is able to come to an agreement with MinDOT to lease that property, I just want to make sure that the way is paved for her to be able to do that. And I'm not sure if there's any other, like, hoops that she has to jump through or hurdles to get through for the permitting process, but I just wanted to make sure that we work all of that out now, so that when she gets her lease in place, so that she can hit the ground running, and we're open next spring, right? So anyhow, I just wanted to make sure that we were addressing that last piece. Thanks.
I think we've begun that process, so. Councilmember Balsanik?
On a brighter note, I just wanted to, to say that the street project over in Ward Two is virtually completed. And I want to thank the neighborhood for their patience. And I want to thank the staff, Public Works and Engineering, for their superb organization in terms of getting the street improvements taken care of. There were, I think there was just one complaint throughout the whole process. And I, I think that's just wonderful that, that everybody just really did accept the way everything was handled. Everything's done. That's the good news. The, I suppose downside is, is that we've got another project that we're looking at in and around that same neighborhood for next year. Hasn't been decided yet, but we will be talking about it in the Operations Committee. But the streets look great. The sidewalks look great. All of the final grading and landscaping looks wonderful. And again, thank you to the residents of Ward Two for their patience and understanding. It's, it's a wonderful-looking project. And again, thank you to our city staff, Public Works and Engineering.
Okay. Thank you for those words, councilmember. Any other announcements? Councilmember Foltch?
Thank you, Your Honor. The, one last thing I wanted to, since we're supposed to do reports also, was just that last Tuesday, October 10th, I had attended the Friends of the Le Duke meeting that was taking place at the Le Duke Mansion. And so, and one of the major pieces that were discussed was the departure of Amy Dever as the site manager for the last four years. And so I just wanted to thank Amy for all of the dedication and wonderful things that you've done for the Le Duke property the last four years, and your commitment, all your dedication, and, oh, yeah. So, and that was so echoed by all of the people who attended that meeting. There must have been at least twenty-five. And so, thank you, and I look forward to the magic that you create, continue to create within the community at the Breakaway Arts Center and, and other places, because you really are an asset to our community. So thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, is there any other announcements? Okay. I have a couple more announcements. On Tuesday, October 17th, the Heritage Preservation Commission will be meeting here at City Hall at 7:00 PM. On Monday, October 23rd, put this on your calendar, Jeff, the Planning Commission will be meeting at 7 o'clock. Okay? On Thursday, October 26th, the Public Safety Advisory Commission will meet at City Hall. And on Monday, October 30th, at 5:30, the Planning Committee, which is chaired by Councilmember Vaughn, along with Councilmembers Balsanik and Foltch, will be meeting on two land use issues. And that's again on Monday, October 30th at 5:30. And then later that evening at 6:30, the City Council will be meeting in a workshop to work on the 2018 budget. On Monday, November 6th, will be the time of our next City Council meeting. That'll be at 7:00 PM. Prior to the meeting, the City Council will have a tour of the police station and City Hall to review the structural needs of the two buildings. This is in relation to, we were able to host, I was able to talk to the House Capital Investment Committee. We have a bill at the legislature to fund, to help us fund some structural improvements here at City Hall. And so this is an opportunity to look in detail for councilmembers to see what that funding entails, and to look at the particular structures that it would fund to, this fund would help to fix. So that tour will begin at, at 6:00 PM. And also, oh, please, everybody out there, the city's looking for engaged residents to apply for advisory commissions, to work on the openings of the Park and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Public Safety Advisory Commission. Any of those commissions, if you'd like to be a part of those commissions, there's more information available on our House website, and you can also sign up on the House website. And counsel, we have no other business before this body. A motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. That is a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.